Thank you. I'm just kind of commercial call coming to order. It's Tuesday, 11th day of January 2022 at 9:30 AM. County courtroom, Anawak, Texas. This is first meeting of the new year.
Happy New Year.
If you'll all rise.
Grace, Heavenly Father, thank you for this day. I want to thank you for many blessings. Pray that your guidance and direct us would make decisions that fix so many. Be with us, keep us all safe and healthy. It's just in the prayer.
You want to come up to the mic and leave us in the pledge? Yeah, you do. We want to get you on the record.
What's your name?
Gabriel White.
Okay, Gabriel.
Please join in the pledge to the United States flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please join in the Texas pledge. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Stay there, Gabriel. You can basically stay right there. We're going to go to your end. Just a second. All right, 1.1. We'll go back to his comments. I don't know if we have any order. All right, we'll go back to, we'll go to 1.1 on the regular meeting agenda. Discuss and consider presentation of new American flag retirement boxes from Gabriel White Eagle Scout. And if you didn't notice it when you came in, it's in the foyer out here. And it looks really nice. We all got a picture with him in the box a few minutes ago. Deborah, you want to fill us in on?
Yes, sir. The boxes are in. We have three of them. The last thing I need to know is where do you want me to put them?
I want one right there.
All right.
Where everybody can see it.
And we have two more. One looks exactly like that and one has a bald eagle on the side of it.
Is my picture or what?
They wouldn't let us do that.
Bald eagle. Yeah. Come on, Heather, wake up.
Morning, Heather.
So that's the one that's going to Barbara's Hill?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
So what do we know? Is it going to the annex or?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
With annex.
And where's one going to win? The Winnie Annex?
I heard some people say they were wanting to be inside the annexes. Are they still wanting to be inside the annexes or outside?
We're going to put ours inside.
All right.
Yeah.
To install them.
I, I actually have to be the ones to install it.
There you go.
There you go. I love that.
So, but I don't know if there's any installation. You sit it where you want it.
We have hardware to mount it to the ground if you want that. They are fairly light and could be bumped around if somebody nudges it too hard.
Okay. But if you put it out of the way, it should be okay.
Yes, sir.
Oh, you guys set where you want it.
Yeah.
All right.
Good.
All right. Well, I tell you, how long you been working on this project?
It's been a while. Just trying to get with fundraising and.
A year, more than a year?
Yes, sir. About a year.
Yeah, I know. It's been a while since you came first time and requested to do it.
And this is your Eagle Scout program?
Yes, sir.
When will you be awarded all that?
It'll probably be a few more months. I have some more merit badges to complete and fill out some paperwork.
When you get that, come back to court.
Absolutely.
Well, yes, come back to court. And we'll do a resolution for you. If you get this information, I would love to do it. Because I know what a big accomplishment that is.
And for the record, would you tell everybody how much money you raised?
I raised about $5,500 to buy the boxes.
Congratulations.
All right. And they look great. Thank you.
Very good. You come up here, please.
It's kind of light, but.
Well, they never come out.
Great.
Great.
We're all proud of you. And I will tell you, I was a member of the same group PR back in the day. I had hair back then, too. But thank you. We appreciate what you did for us. Okay, moving on. Unless you want, let's have a motion to accept. Motion by Commissioner Tice, second by Commissioner Combs, and all those are in favor. Most carries. Thank you. All right, 2.1, discuss, consider approval of the chairman's county fund balance policy and fraud weight, policy and fraud waste and abuse policy for year ending December 31st, 2022. We have our new auditor with us. Aaron.
Sure, guys. It's just the same policy that goes on every, every year.
Nothing changed, don't?
No, sir.
Entertainer motion.
Sorry, sir.
Motion by Commissioner Gore. Did Mark. Second by Commissioner.
Commissioner Hammond being.
Got it. Second by Commissioner Hammond. This is his first item ever on Commissioner George Dobbie. Don't even ask him some questions. Put him on the pod.
Remember that when you need, when we need some, who made the motion?
Does a favor. Oh, this motion carries. 4.1, discuss, consider options. Ryan, you're here just in time. Come on up. 4.1, discuss, consider options, simplify drainage design process for commercial industrial developments. I'll tell you that Ryan and I met with some of the local developers, small developers, a couple of weeks ago. And what came out of the, Commissioner Gore met with us to, what came out of the meeting was forming a committee of those on the development review committee, the DRC, and those small developers to try to work out some, make things easier for the smaller developers. And then the committees actually meet tomorrow afternoon at 4:00. So really, this is kind of premature, but Corey wanted to put it on, so I thought it'd be a good opportunity to just put it out there. Ryan, you want to say anything?
Just that we met internally yesterday and there's already some, a few ideas and changes coming around that I think will be helpful. So I don't know if, if, if you wanted to speak to it, if Brad was here for something else, but anyway, they had some.
Okay, come on, Brad.
Yeah, I mean, it is a little bit premature. We are going to be tomorrow, but I think right now what we are looking to go to is a two acre rule, a two acre rule. And where we can just do a drainage review in-house. There's more to it than just that. I mean, there's 30,000 square foot impervious threshold that we have. Anything under that, we don't feel that it needs to be a, go through a full process. And it's, and it's, I think it's maybe also we've got some green space issues that are still on the table. Illumination, maybe even sound decibels, a threshold for that, but I don't know what the threshold is.
Yeah, and I totally agree with you. I mean, we've been working with the judge and the committee on this here for a while to make it easier for our industry to move through this process. People outside of county and the Harris County and stuff like that used to go through this process. A lot of in-county people that are building stuff on small properties were having issues with the green space. So one thing I want to ask to put notes for tomorrow is I was asked if we're doing 30,000 square feet impervious. Okay, above that, do they get credit for that 30,000? That, that was a question asked to him because if we're doing 30,000 impervious and they do 100,000, do they get credit for that 30 and we only figured the 70? So we need to think about that when we run the rules because if you give them credit for the 30, then we got a bit of a tension point with 70. So that is a little gray area there. We need to.
Yeah, and, and I think the intent of this is that, so if you've got someone with a, a small, they've got a boutique, right? We don't want them to have to spend tens of thousands of dollars on, on shrubs and trees for, for a site and sound barrier. They're not causing any adverse impact when it comes to that. It, that's what we're trying to, you know, focus on, smaller projects like that.
We don't want to stop the growth. And I believe, I believe this effect was more in rural areas.
It does.
We've had several projects in Winnie area in this area here that where they want to take 20 feet all the way around the project. When you do that, the smaller pieces of property.
Just, you can't, you can't do much with it. Yeah.
We're trying to make that process easier.
Yeah. Is there anything else you want to add to it?
No, I mean, we, we've possibly been working on trying to make the, the process a lot easier. I don't know if you remember, we approved in court to add the two extra firms to help as far as reviewing projects. That way.
So we have three now.
Yes, we have three now. I worked with George on getting those contracts established. We actually have them up and running already and the drainage time has actually decreased, I would say. The turnaround now is two weeks for in-house and.
That's a good improvement.
Yes, so we're working on that and Corey mentioned possibly sending me and Zach out for training so we can start doing more in houses, which we're greatly in favor of.
We are too. I think that's, I think the committee will discuss that too.
Do in-house, the, the better off.
So when you going to school?
When am I going back to school? Um, I don't know. I, I think that's up to Corey. But I know we've met before with, with an accent, that company. I know they specialize in training as well. I know we've been waiting on TechSat to open up the courses for us to go in public to train over there, but I don't think they've been open to the public yet. I know Corey's been working on that. That's kind of where we stand.
Well, it's a good, what we're looking at doing is a small project, do it in-house where you can make that turnaround and get it out. So the big projects still need the experts to.
Oh, no, definitely. And we still stay heavily involved in that, that way we can get more background information on that and better understanding of how the whole process works.
I'm looking, looking forward to what will come out with committee and I appreciate you guys taking time and the, and the assistance out there. Take your time, sir. All right, questions to this group? Okay, thank you all.
Thank you, Brad. Thank you, Heather.
All right, we're going to table 4.1.
You're going to table it, pull it, come, have to come back to same format.
No, we could pull it and then Ryan, whatever, however you want to put it back on the agenda. You and Corey, y'all bring it back to the agenda.
Yeah, it's just.
It doesn't matter. We're going to pull a table and no action. So. I'm good. Let's go to 6.1. We got some folks here on it. Is that what you're going to say? Parks and Recreation, 6.1, discuss, share the revised by-board purchase of Fort Anaway Park splash pad from Craftsman Commercial Playground and water parks to include additional 84,717.28 for a total project amount of 399,941.28. Mr. Gore.
We've been working with AMDD and also the city of Anawak. I believe everybody has, did everybody get a copy of this?
Yeah, Lauren. That's what everybody.
So city has, we've come to an agreement, which we're going to, this is Friday, so I mean, it really, they're going to cut the sewer rates. And then the water, the wave, the sewer fee, wave all the usage, waving it. Sorry, the flat rate of $3 for 1,000 gallons of water, which is really going to help this project in the county with the cost of water. Under the old rates, 110,000 gallons of water, but it costs $1,419 with the rates that we negotiated with the city. It's going to cost $330.
So let me interrupt you there. I understand 110,000 gallons is like peak for this facility?
Yes.
Okay, so that's.
Houston's per day?
No, that's a month.
Per month?
All right, go ahead, Commissioner.
So anyway, we have been negotiating with the city and I kind of greatly appreciate the MFP as involved as they are. I just appreciate AMDD. AMDD, I think most of you know, I'd like to say, I'm very thankful for them because they stepped up and put another $100,000 into this project to make this project even larger. We have all the big subdivisions coming in, more kids and building right next to the baseball complex. It's going to be very nice to see. So, I mean, anybody have any questions on it?
My question is, are we all going to go out and play on it first time? AMDD in the county, so. Partnership.
AMDD can cut the check to the county anytime that when they, before the project gets started, so we can move forward.
So, sir auditor, when they need to cut the check or anytime, we just make it or?
No, that's a good question. I think.
Thank you.
Another, they want to do a donation. We can, we can talk to AMDD and see kind of how.
Yeah, we probably have to put them on court to accept the donation. So let's come to court to do that. And if y'all, Aaron, if y'all, you'll get with.
Will you want that donation all at once or will you want it as?
We, we, we can work with the owners. It doesn't matter. We'll work with you.
Just making sure that we understand, we, y'all okay, the court okay $315,000 for the original. Now we're having a change order in the amount of $84,000 and change. So I need a PO approved for $399,000 and some change.
Can somebody explain why, what prompted the additional money?
Okay, I'll let Kirk do that. Yes, sir. What's that?
Why is the additional 85,000 needed?
That's additional.
It was an upgrade because AMDD wanted to put another $100,000 into the project.
But it's not costing the county.
It's not costing the county anything. But they, that's, the size of the splash pad is a little bit larger and some of the features are upgraded. So that's the additional 84,000.
Okay.
But it's not a cost of the court, that 80,000.
Right, because y'all are coming up with 100,000.
This is a request from AMDD and they are paying.
Okay.
That's clarified.
Trying, trying to get clear on it.
So my question is, where did the county funding come from?
We, we budgeted. We budgeted our portion of this year out of hot funds.
And Commissioner Hammond, what you budget out of hot, about 150,000, give or take, for this project?
Okay.
That's what the county's putting in. Yes, sir.
So they should wind up at like 144?
They will come up with the, the remainder to get to 399. Yes, sir.
Okay.
150 is what the county is, but give or take, right in there. Yes, sir. It's just, it's a win-win for everyone.
Oh, yeah. It's great for there. All right, any other questions, anything? Motion by Commissioner Gore, second by Commissioner Tice. No other questions, those in favor? All those most carries. Got it done. Thank you all. Thanks, city of Anawak. Thank you, AMDD.
Yes.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Be a nice addition.
Come up and answer the microphone so we pick you up.
You can do it, Annette.
Yeah, that, that would be nice to introduce. I know.
We have some newly elected.
Say your name for the record, Brian.
My name is Annette Abernathy.
Hi, Nan.
This is Kenneth Miller. Go ahead.
Hi, Karen.
I just want to thank you guys for joining with us so we can be able to get this done. This is one of the biggest projects that we had when I got on the, the committee. You know, it was out there, but we just didn't, we didn't know how we were going to do it. And so with you guys partnering with us and making it possible. Now, there are some other ideas that we have that we're going to need some more partnership with. So, so you'll be hearing from us in the future.
Well, partnerships are good. When someone, somebody comes and asks you something and says, hey, we want to kind of do this, that's one thing. When we come with, hey, let's partner on it. You know, that makes it, makes it really nice. Makes it easier to do.
Yeah, well, AMD is working for the taxpayers. I mean, it's taxpayer money we're, we're working with. And we're going to spend the money, but we're going to spend it to improve the, the neighborhood and the community. And since we're having all these new people moving in, we really need to have something like that. We need a swimming pool too. So that's our next big project. And that, that's going to be a big project, but we definitely going to need partnership to get it done.
All right.
And also, this is Tom Neb. He is our new vice chairman. And he actually graduated from Anawak High School.
A long time ago. I understand. All right. And I appreciate all the cooperation we've had with the county and enjoyed it very much. Thank you.
All right, thank you, guys. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thanks for all you did.
Thanks, Annette.
All right, back, excuse me, back up thinking on the development tourism. I want to discuss, consider authorized payment of 20,900. US Army Corps of Engineers for administrative fees associated with proposed older boat ramp. Sam out there, you see Sam? All right, anyone on 5.1, Sam? US Army Corps.
Oh, okay.
20,900.
How are y'all?
Good, are you?
Good. Cold, but good. Okay, so this is that project we've been talking about for a while. We're still kind of ahead of the game on this, but this is something that Commissioner Hammond and I have worked on for several months. It's the proposed Old River, Old River Boat Ramp that we're going to submit an application through the Texas Department of Agriculture's Boating Access Grant for. We talked to the Corps of Engineers about that piece of property because they own it. We have to get permission from them. They did tell us there wouldn't be a lease fee, but there are administrative costs associated with transferring the title over. We don't have guarantees that they're going to give us the land, full disclosure, although it seems pretty positive that they will, that they've even engaged us up until this point. And the conversations that I'm having with staff are positive as well. So in order to do that, we have to pay them $20,900. We can pay for it out of hot funds because it's on a navigable waterway and it does all of the things that hot funds wants us to do. So today we're asking that you guys approve the payment of that.
Those from my, to Mr. Hammond. Second by Mr. Tice.
Yeah, would the county, would they actually need the land to the county or would they just give us a right?
It would be a lease like we have on other areas where we have boat ramps where, yes, sir. So we'll have access to it basically indefinitely. But it is, they'll still maintain ownership of the land. We'll be able to do what we need to do as long as we submit clearance.
Two other.
Right, Charlotte, Lake Charlotte and Go-Go.
Yes, sir. Well, and actually, any of the boat ramps that go out into the waterways, we have to work with the Corps of Engineers on and we have leases there. So anytime Kirk and his team do any cleaning of boat ramps, we have to reinforce that lease there. So we, we actually maintain a file of all of the leases in my office. Kirk and I had to work on that earlier, early last year, getting copies of all those leases.
Yeah, well, you, you said give it to.
Sorry. Thanks for clarifying. Sorry.
All right, any other questions? For the favor? Oh, most carries. Thank you, Sam. We have 5:20 scheduled.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Hold on that one. Let's go to 181, Personnel, discuss, consider approval, extension of paid days to employees exposed to quarantine due to COVID-19. January 1st, 2022, 13:30 of 2022. What we've discussed is, you know, we had a policy going forward. And leaving the policy the same that everyone else has received, the benefit they've received for the last two years. I know the times change some from the CDC, but I think you leave it the same that way if, if, well, I was going to use Aaron, but he's not a paid employee. Lauren gets sick, she's off COVID, and then it's, happens to get sick again, she's got that 14 days that those other employees were, were given in the past. I think to just extend what we've done. That's my opinion.
A new normal that we're living in is just.
Yeah, I agree.
It's, it is a new normal, but here at State, you know, we.
Yeah.
And the taxpayers that are paying this money, they're not getting.
Well, I mean, it's only after the first time when they're taking the rotation and stuff like that, so.
Yes, it's 14 days period for an employer, not a year.
It's not. It's period.
I'm confused.
After, after, say.
You can use my, one of my employees.
You can, yeah, one of Heather's employees gets COVID.
One of my employees has never gotten COVID. And now with this new variant, gets COVID and everybody else has had the opportunity since 2020 to use those 14 days, this COVID. And of course, the CDC guidelines have changed to five days quarantine, et cetera, but.
If you test negative, then there's some else there anyway.
So now we've got an employee that has never had COVID and now comes up with COVID yesterday.
But understand that we've already set a precedent back. Some of our employees have already taken this 14 days. So, I mean, any employee.
So will they get it again?
No, it's 14 day period, period, 14 day period for the, for COVID extension.
So we're just, we're just extending the same opportunity that previous employees have to anyone that gets it in the future.
So, yeah. So Heather's other employee's already got the 14 days in 2020 and she's going to take sick leave now.
Yep.
So. Yeah, take the microphone, sir. It's.
Mike, after.
Thank you, Mike.
So hypothetically, if you got the Delta and you went five day quarantine and then got the Omnicrude. Okay, so it's cumulative, but you can piece it out by 14.
For the COVID-19 infection, period. So, yeah, you're right.
And then on that note, I believe that every department head needs a list from each employee on who has taken COVID leave.
Yes, and I.
You did that from HR.
We've already talked to HR about it.
How many of our employees have used it and how many have not?
Yeah, and I don't.
Probably not many left that haven't.
I don't know how much of that.
Yeah, that's what I was just sitting there thinking. I don't know how much you want to release.
I mean, we might be able to give percentages of how many, but I mean, I don't think we can give names and stuff.
I don't know either. That's between us.
Although you can give it to your department head because you, you know, because you give them permission to be off and stuff like that. I don't have to release it outside your department.
Yeah, I don't know. Got to be careful. That's, that's 20-day charter.
I mean, at a point now that COVID is really like the common cold. I mean, it's just.
Yeah.
It's not a matter if you're going to get it, it's when and how many times. And I mean, you know.
And I agree with you.
I am so tired of COVID.
Absolutely concur.
And my rearview mirror has been for a long time.
But we're still talking about it.
Long time. We just had it.
I know, and I played golf while I had it.
You can't tell people that.
I got out of town. I was by myself.
So you infected other people. I'm out of town.
No, no, I did not. I got lucky.
But, but I agree with you, Commissioner. It's worth the point, which is good news that.
It is good.
It's not.
So this is only if the employee actually has the virus. It's not for if their family member has it and they have to stay home with their family member or.
The only letter that comes from the health department is a positive case.
Clarifying for everybody's sake.
I, I totally agree. And I discussed it with the judge the other day. I mean, we're taking, we're not taking home tests as a verification. It has to be a verifiable test. So I mean, home test, don't count.
Okay, I'll maintain a motion to extend. First by Commissioner Gore, second by Commissioner Tice. Those in favor? Opposing. Mr. Combs, want to post? Thanks. All right. Let's go to the Senate, Denver. Commissioner Law. Executive session number six.
Everything else.
Listen to Mark. Six. Yeah, do you have any questions on either of the Senate? Questions, comments? Six going to executive session.
I want to make comment on 19 vacation carryover. So we've discussed this, I think, more than one time about this has to come to an end. So, like, right now. So we can't continue to carry over vacation. Understand, last year was a rough year, but, and I think what I've seen, that kind of got to be a habit of people just carrying vacation over. So I'm okay with 19, but I think we need to get word out to all the department heads. Our employees need to take their vacation. And we're not going to carry vacation over just for convenience.
Well, I mean, I, I totally agree with you. And I mean, a couple of them, they're wondering why they didn't take it. I mean, and, and so, but I mean, that's one thing we have got to get on the floor because it seems like every quarter we're rolling over.
Yeah. So do you want to work with the HR to?
Certainly.
Come up with something to put out?
Yeah. Yeah. Very, very clearly.
Up to forty hours.
Something you need to work with HR on changing the policy.
Yeah, and if you two guys will do with that, we'll deal with it.
So the HR policy is very clear about emergency situation only. So, and we've gotten away from the emergency only part, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think we just need to send a reminder out to all the department heads and.
Yeah, I think the policy already says emergency. I don't know if it needs to be changed. We just don't enforce it. If, if, when we do that, I mean, you need to get like in Heather's office if you're in this. I mean, she needs to give a list from HR. Everybody's starting. And I don't know.
We have that. I think every department head has it. Am I right?
Yeah, you need to have it posted in your office so you can look. I mean, and then, and then they need to explain to their employees who takes it, who's loose.
Yeah.
It's got to be a.
Okay. Anything else, Commissioner?
No, sure.
Hi, Mr. Ford.
Uh, let's take number five back with number six to executive session.
Okay.
And also, I'd like to, on item number eleven, see if we could get some math in here to discuss that a little bit.
Sam.
No, I, I, you know, I understood it. I looked at it, but personally, I don't think this should have been on the executive session, you know, or on the consent agenda. I just wanted to let everybody see what we're doing and what we're looking at.
What section is it?
Uh, the logos.
Oh, yeah. And I debated, I debated which section to put it on. Just, I try not, I mean, I know I kind of inundate y'all because, I mean, what do I average, like eight items? So I try not to inundate y'all, but I mean, I can definitely put it on regular next time as well.
Either place goes, it's still, it's still out there for the public to look at, bros to pull and discuss, so.
Sure. So you're talking about the brand standards and guidelines, correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so we had a conversation, the judge and George and I, that the county has no brand identity, basically, no standardized identity. I mean, we've kind of all followed a similar guideline, but as we grow, we wanted to prevent or present a more united front. And so what I did was basically take everything that we're already doing informally and compile that into a formal document there. And that's stuff, like I said, that we're already doing, the letterhead process, we're already following, most of the logos we're already doing, but there are some new departments that are asking for logos, and so just kind of having a more united front will help our county to be more recognizable and then also to be more professional, if you will.
No, absolutely.
And it goes back to the point. I mean, Samantha's in the office, doing a great job. I guess, kudos. I know we overloaded, overloaded you when we, it's kind of like this here, we, every county vehicle is going to have a logo and it's a parking. I mean, we want to know who, where, and whatever. We also put trackers on one hundred and forty-one vehicles to make sure, and, and it shows everything for their safety.
Sure.
Trying to get more transparent to our.
Right, and the county is a brand. I mean, we don't think of it like that, but Chambers County is a brand, and when we interact with our public, we need to have a united front. And so standardizing the way that our organization looks is another way that we can reinforce our goals and values. And then again, we look a little bit more professional, and that's always a good thing. It gives us a place of authority when we're speaking, and that's important to have, especially because we are the authority on so many things that we do. And, you know, I get a lot of emails in a hundred different fonts and people with a million different signatures that are frankly inappropriate and unprofessional a lot of times. And so when that person is sending you an email, sending an email to the public saying, hey, you need to pay a fine, or this is the procedure, it doesn't bode well for the county. And so I certainly have no intention of strong-arming anybody, and we want people to be able to maintain their individuality because that's important to the culture of the county. But if we have a set of guidelines for people to work within, I think it just works a little bit better.
Great. No, I like it. I think it's good. And if you would, just elaborate a little bit on the difference between the official seal and.
Oh, yes, sir. Yes, sir. So there are actually two marks that the county has identified, two logos, if you will. One is the official state seal, and it's the one that's pictured right behind the judge, and the other is what we call the popular mark, which is the red, white, and blue Texas logo that you see on most county vehicles on a lot of our uniforms. So the official seal is to be used in official capacities only, specifically related to Commissioners Court and other court and judicial proceedings. And this popular mark is to be used in basically every other activity. So you're going to see the, the official mark on letterheads, on letters from Commissioners, elected officials, courts, et cetera, and then you're going to see the other in the more everyday type uses. But they're both recognized and approved. It's just one is a little bit more official and more tied to judicial proceedings.
So the constables, JPs, we have.
He has to use the five star in judicial proceedings.
Yes. And so we did allow for a. No, that's all right. I knew what you meant. The elected officials, we did allow them to create their own logo, or we can assist with that because I know sometimes they want to be, and should be, identified just a little bit separately. We'd like to keep it somewhat consistent with a running color theme or thing like, or something like that. But we do understand that each office has a different role, and they may want to be distinguished otherwise. And then we also allowed for individual departments within the county that aren't run by elected officials to develop their own logo, which is the popular mark surrounded by the navy blue with their department name in it. And again, the whole purpose is just standardizing here.
So I like it. I just wanted you to explain.
Well, and I haven't sent it out to department heads or anything. We will. And then I, as always, you know, I'm always available to help anybody, any department as they're going through it. And that's mentioned multiple times in there, that if you have a question, just send me an email and we'll work through it together. And again, the purpose here is not to strong-arm anybody or say, hey, you can't put whatever you want in your signature. It's just to say, these are some ideas that maybe you could follow that would make us look a little more professional. Okay? All right.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, I'll be in the hall for my ten thirty.
Yeah. Anything else?
Got everything else, sir. Thank you.
All right, I'll maintain motion on the concern agenda, seven, five, and six, which are going to executive session. First back, Mr. Tass, second back, Mr. Hammond, those in favor. Oh, most carries. All right, we're going to take a twenty-minute recess and come back before, I think we covered, no, let's go, I'm sorry. Let's go to supplemental agenda. All right, we have supplemental jet, supplemental agenda, special call meeting. There's only one item, discuss the sale of purchase of a twenty twenty-one Ford Explorer for the District Attorney Investigator forfeiture Fund from sales before the amount of twenty-nine thousand nine sixty-eight twenty-five. Door joint addresses are.
Well, I can just still find it a little bit on Judge. The account they wanted to use for this, their forfeiture fund, it only showed thirteen thousand dollars, but after talking to Aaron, there is three hundred thousand dollars available. There'll need to be a budget adjustment made, and then we can purchase this vehicle for him, if that's what y'all want to do. Yes.
Yeah, that's right. But, you know, they just need to make sure they do the budget adjustment for it, so it's all nice and clean. So, but there, there is money in there, but, you know, you just need to make sure that, I know there's, there were some people that, for their, that are not there anymore that used to do the stuff, but, and I know the transition between me and Otter is a little different, so a lot of people come talk to me about those budget adjustments, but the money is there.
Okay, so we can bring it back next board and just clean it up. We can go ahead and approve it.
You can approve it pending the budget decision gets done.
That'd be my motion, Judge.
Most back, Mr. Gore.
Second.
Second back, Commissioner Hammond. So my understanding, this is a full car for the, for the District Attorney's Office that would be used for travel and.
Can we just buy them a ton for Tommy? Do it.
Yeah, both investigators have been, well, this will be.
That's right, they got.
Travel car, full car.
Yeah.
Like we have here.
And, and, and this is out of their seizure of money, so it's not general fund. This is their own little special dedicated fund that's for the DA using making, and they can use it kind of how they almost kind of.
We have to agree with it.
But, yeah, y'all approve the budget. You have the DA for that budget, but it is a special fund from the general fund.
Aaron's car looks like an otter.
Sure sounds like one.
Certainly looks like one.
Those in favor.
All right.
Oh, those motion carries. All right, now, ten twelve, we'll come back at ten thirty sharp. Take a recess.
We'll get eighteen minutes.
Eighteen minutes, I'm setting mine. Austin.
All right, whenever we go back to citizens' comment, Judge.
All right, James County Commissioner will come to order after executive, excuse me, after break, ten thirty-five AM. It's hot, when you have citizen comments. You might. I'll look at that every time.
That wasn't like.
It's over, yeah.
Uh, yes, sir. I just wanted to announce, I was at an elections conference all last week. I graduated from the registered.
Congratulations.
Um, uh, but more than that, I wanted to announce that we were given successful status, so we can have countywide voting in Chambers County, which is a huge plus for the county. And so, thank you. And we will be doing that with the primaries, so we'll be able to now post our polling locations, et cetera, for the primary.
Right.
It was a long year, but we got it done.
Now, you need to pick up. White Park will be a voting place.
White's Park will now be.
This is a citizen comment. We can't just go to that, Commissioner?
Oh, sorry. Yes, yes. And White's Park will be.
Wait a minute.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Altr. Shut up.
Thank you, thank you, Miss Altr for the hard work.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I'm going to say that if, uh, I recognize that one of my staff members was truly being underutilized in her position, and I moved her to handle totally election. That's all she's doing, and it's amazing with photo registration and, of course, the constitutional and countywide and getting the mass mail-out finished, and now the primary. It's amazing that with one person focusing on that, it's, it's, she's done an amazing, outstanding job. So Leanne Martin is also to be commended for all of the things that are happening.
Go ahead, give her.
And she graduated with me as well.
Awesome. Okay, Ron Nichols has said the comment, Ron.
There we go. All right, so I just wanted to say thank you to Commissioners and the community. For those that didn't know, last week, we basically started on Sunday, seventy-seven percent of my EMS staff all contracted COVID nineteen with the new variant within a matter of three days. So we went down to having seven full-time employees that were available to work. So thank you to DSHS, thank you to the Emergency Medical Task Force through our retweet system and the state providing us those two strike team ambulances over the weekend to give my guys that have been here for three or four days a day off and some break, and tell some guys that got healthy to come back to work. It made a huge difference for our team, and they sent some pretty phenomenal paramedics to help us out over the weekend, and guys that we had worked with in Del Rio and El Paso, so that helped out too. We went and helped those guys out, so they got to come, and then help us out too, which is really nice. So I just wanted to say thank you and put that on the record.
Will you draft me a letter? Let me.
Yes, sir. I'll get it sent to you today.
All right, thank you, Ron. Appreciate it. Glad things are going better. Okay. Sam. Patrick. All right, we're on to five point two, public hearing, ten thirty AM regarding submission of an application to the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs for Community Resiliency Program application associated with Community Development Block Grant Cares Act program. So it's ten thirty-eight, we'll go into public hearing this time, recess out of regular session, go into public hearing. Patrick. Yeah, I know, it sounded like the attorney did. Good morning. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. So, public hearing. There we go.
There you go.
Public hearing regarding this, this program. So just to kind of, for the good of the public, what the program is, sort of the funding available, types of activities available, and then the county's sort of past, you know, grant opportunities. So this program is sort of what we see as a one-time program. So Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs is a, is a housing agency. They do single-family, multi-family housing, and they received CARES Act funding from March of last year, right at the start of the pandemic, and they, it was supposed to be used towards rental assistance, foreclosure assistance, and different activities like that. And they were unable to use all of that money. And so as a result, they modified their allocation to create this particular program called the Community Resiliency Program. And they've set aside just over thirty-eight million dollars for a statewide competition to do sort of construction activities or acquisition activities. So construction activity is what they call public facilities, which is hospitals, clinics, EMS stations, senior centers, you know, things like that, and then public services, which sort of translated more into what vehicles and equipment, so ambulances and, you know, potentially fire trucks, but it needed to, needed to really have some sort of impact on COVID and in response to COVID, so that it would help prevent the impacts of future disasters or future pandemics like that. And so that's the program. So the program is this, you know, this modified housing agency type of funding for thirty-eight million dollars, and it is statewide. You can apply for up to five million dollars for a public facility, construction or rehabilitation, or up to eight hundred, eight hundred thousand dollars for like public services, so the vehicles. Those applications are due on January nineteenth, so next, next week, next Wednesday.
And I think that it's important to note that the reason that we're kind of calling this a once-in-a-lifetime grant is the brick-and-mortar grant don't exist anymore.
You're right.
Be hard-pressed to find a brick-and-mortar grant. I know that's kind of hard to hear right now when we're dealing with American Rescue Act, where we can do brick-and-mortar activities, but these are two very, very unique opportunities to actually build a facility with. And so we really think that Patrick and I think that the county should definitely consider utilizing these funds, and we worked kind of through a committee to come up with what we have presented, obviously, is your choice and your discretion on that, but we certainly feel like it's a great opportunity. Now, Patrick mentioned the five million dollar maximum. The camp, there's no match, except the county pays anything over the five million. So it's not an official match, it's just to pay the difference there.
Yeah. You know, it's still CDVG funding at the end of the day, and so there are all the requirements that go with CDVG, which is you got to principally benefit low to moderate income persons. So whatever the program or the project is that is selected, you have to justify your beneficiaries. And so that's a challenge, you know, in, you know, in most cases. You know, I have pretty good relationships with the folks at TDHCA. In my conversation with them as this was being rolled out, was that they were really looking at sort of senior centers because it was the easiest one, you know, those, those individuals that go there are assisted living centers or, you know, centers for domestic violence and women's shelters. Those are ones that it's, you know, by the nature of that facility, they're low income. And so they were pushing that, but not everybody needs that. In my conversation with TDHCA is that, you know, rural Texas doesn't have a lot of those facilities. Those are more the urbanized areas. And so they have allowed us to expand this to include EMS stations, fire stations, you know, health clinics, as long as you can justify who your beneficiaries are. And so that had been the big deal going into this. So, you know, again, there is no match requirement other than what is over the amount that's being requested for. So, you know, again, there is no match requirement other than what is over the amount that's being requested for whatever the project is. Um, up to five million, uh, for a facility, up to eight hundred thousand for, uh, a, a, a vehicle. The agency has indicated that they will move fast in terms of the awards. So they would expect, um, you know, within this first quarter or by the second quarter of the year that they would make awards. Um, thirty-eight million dollars is not a lot of money to go statewide if a lot of entities are requesting five million dollars, um, a pop. And so we expect it to be pretty competitive, uh, due to that. Uh, so, you know, applications needed to be sort of what they called shovel-ready, which, um, is interpretable. Who, you know, who really understands what that means, um, other than they wanted you to have teams in place and contracted. And if you had plans, that would be great. And if there was, you know, some sort of level of design, well, you know, that's hard, you know, that's hard to have in place. And so, you know, we don't, um. We don't know truly what this is going to shake out to be, but, um, you know, CDBG, like Sam mentioned, it does not do brick and mortar, uh, grants. Because the way that this rolled out, we completely know that this isn't going to come back, um, in any capacity that I can see presently. Um, so it is, uh, it is a good opportunity. Now, the county, uh, has been very successful over the years, at least from my experience with CDBG. Um, you know, over sixty-four million dollars of funds that you guys have, you know, received and managed and are currently managing.
Well, and you've helped.
And they have, uh, we, I will say not to Patrick's horn or my hopes is horn Sarah's horn specifically.
Go ahead, Tim.
Well, all two Patrick and Sarah's horns been, um, they, is, the CDBG program has expressed a great deal of, uh, belief in their capacity to manage these programs. And that's always been difficult to us.
Absolutely.
And they've certainly given us, um, work with us a lot because of their capacity to manage things like this. So not related to the agenda item, but words many Patrick's and assets. There was a wonderful asset. So, uh, great to have them on.
Okay, this is a public hearing. So if you're public comments, yes, ma'am, you'll come up to the microphone.
No, it's, it's just a question for Patrick or for Sam. Is this open to? Gloria Romer, managing editor and publisher of the Seabreeze Beacon. The question is, is this open to special districts? Will the special districts have to go through the county to apply for this?
Special districts would have had to gone through the county. Especially any kind of, so the, the only recipient of the CPG funds for this program would be a city or a county. So the county, uh, or a district or a special district or a nonprofit would have had to have approached with an eligible activity for that to be considered.
Okay, because you were talking about this is used for like clinics or hospitals.
Right.
So a hospital district, who would they contact in the county to?
So my ass is our contact.
They would have contacted me. We did not have anybody contact me.
Okay, and let's get out of the public hearing unless there's other public comments. Here nine at ten forty-seven AM. But during from the public hearing, go back into regular session, five point three, discuss consider resolution authorizing the submission of an application to the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs for the Community Resilience Program. What else, Patrick?
So there's a resolution in the agenda, uh, that has a few attachments.
I think you got it by an email.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, so the project that was identified and, you know, we had various conversations about, um, you know, folks within the county about what we could do. You know, what the opportunities were. And so ultimately, we settled on a, uh, new EMS station, uh, that is, uh, would be placed on county-owned property. Um, it basically at the four corners, uh, as you come into town. Um, there was a rendering that went along with the packet of leaf, um, that kind of showed, showed that. Uh, it would be a, um, three-bay, uh, EMS facility, um, that would have, you know, your training rooms, your reception area. Uh, you know, all of, all of the necessities that Ron's team would need to function in its own space. And the idea would be to, uh, construct it in such a way that it could be expanded upon, uh, in the future. The, uh, you know, the budget is, um, is, uh, kind of laid out within those documents. And so what we, what we've shown is we have a six and a half million dollar construction budget, uh, to construct this particular facility, which includes two access points, one onto five sixty-three and then one that's going over the canal. Um, presently, that's the way that it, that that's structured. Um, you know, it's a, it's a blank piece of land. And so barring any, you know, site work that we are unaware of, and this is kind of the, you know, the cost that we're looking at for construction, uh, included in the overall, uh, totals for the project. You have, uh, the architect's fees and engineering fees and special service fees like testing and, uh, soil sampling and whatever would, that they're estimating to be used on that site of seven hundred sixty, seven hundred twenty-six thousand dollars. And then you have administration fees on top of that, which would cover everything from the eligibility, the environmental, uh, at six hundred fifty thousand for a total of, um, uh, of, uh, seven point eight million dollars. And so the resolution shows an application to be submitted of five million dollars, which is the maximum that can be requested. And then a local contribution of, uh, two point eight million dollars, which would be covering, you know, any overages for the construction activity. Whereas we're showing that the, um, the administration and the architectural engineering would all be paid out of the grant itself. And so any overages associated to the construction of that facility.
Is it, is it going, is it going to help score that it shows the county is going to put up to two point eight million?
There isn't additional points for, um, for, for, for contribution over, over that or showing match. Um, what you needed to have to have a, you know, good, um, application was a team in place. So you've procured, um, us in, in the engineer or the architectural firm. And so we have a team in place. And so that is going to help the scoring.
And LMI.
And the LMI. So the area that we've identified is sort of this mid, mid-county, down to Smith Point out into, um, kind of the Winnie area as that's the service area for that, for that station. And so that area qualifies as LMI and we can show that, um, otherwise we wouldn't have gotten this far.
And then I was telling you guys, because I think it's important that submitting an application is not a contract binding the county to anything. And we can submit that application as it is, get awarded and choose not to take the money. Or we can say, hey, look, we're going to modify our project a little bit, but it's an important distinction that we are not entering into a contract for anything by submitting an application. Um, Patrick and I have talked extensively, I mean, two point eight is a lot, a lot of money. We recognize that. And as always, we want to be good stewards of the taxpayer funds here. Um, it's worth noting, you're getting a seven point eight million dollar building for two point eight million dollars. The rest is the current grant, something for you guys to consider. Um, and then always I like to point out that we're looking at twenty twenty-two monies, which are weird enough. Can you imagine what twenty-three or twenty-four, twenty-five would look like when the EMS station is no longer suitable? I know they're nearing that because the ambulances that are being produced now are just too big for those spaces.
Well, that, I don't know how that building is, the EMS station, but it's older than our jail, which is forty years old.
Right.
I'd say considerably older.
And I feel fairly confident that once we get in, we can look at trimming the fat down some and get that number down from two point eight. I can't say that we're going to get it down to nothing. I really don't think that's going to be the case. We could get it down some, though. I feel confident in saying that. And again, submitting an application is not a contract. I think that's a very, very important distinction. As always, it's you guys' decision to make. Uh, and we respect whatever you want. It's just our job to present options.
Just got to get clarification. Uh, Patrick, on the team in place that you have to have, the architect, who is that? How do we, how do we procure that?
You've already procured them, T and P.
That was for, that was for that bingo. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Resolution, approve the resolution. That, that will, that will approve the submission of the application.
And approve up to the two point eight.
It'll approve the application amount and your match amount, and that will be the final authorization to submit this application.
And then once we get the complete application, we'll run through court, just so you guys can have an official record of it as well in the public agency.
So remind me again where this property is?
It's, um, what is on the four corners. Um, you may be better to state this than me.
We had to find property that the county already owned. So where we want to put it, and we're basically waiting on authorization from the FAA. So it might be able to transfer to that location, but that's something that's part of the grant. So currently where it would be is at the four corners in Anwak, on the north side of, uh, sixty-five at five sixty-three, right there on the corner. With Redfish storages. Uh, we're trying to, to try and procure it on the other side, uh, just because it's a larger property. Um, and it would actually probably save us a little bit of money on the, the, the site work as well.
On the other side of what?
On the south side of five sixty-three by the Chevron on, on that corner. It also alleviates building the bridge. I mean, so we're just waiting.
So there's enough land there.
There's four. There's seven and a half acres.
So we also were, when we developed this application, we were under the impression that that piece of land between the existing health services building and the existing warehouses claimed for another project. But I think that may not be the case now. And so we can look at that piece too. Um, so we have a little bit of wiggle room on where it is. And, uh, site work is a big portion of the cost here just because unfortunately so much of that particular area is so low lying. Um, so, you know, if we can look at alternative sites too that the county owns, that would be a little bit less, uh, be more cost-effective, less invasive as far as work goes, we can do that.
Well, I think we, uh, in my mind, we look further down south on Airport Road. And, uh, I'll be on the east side. And we look at detention. And because we need detention there anyway.
Okay.
And it could be a start, this could be a start of detention for health services warehouse that we're looking at too. Maybe we can combine these projects.
Sure, we can absolutely.
So y'all probably, y'all need to meet with, uh, those folks.
Absolutely.
And let's kind of coordinate where this is going, going.
So any changes that we would make would, you know, would come, uh, post award. So we would, this is where we would roll with what we're presenting today.
And not a contract.
Right.
Important to note.
Hopefully it gets awarded, you know, that, and that's, and that, that's what the hope is. Um, you know, we wouldn't be changing. If we didn't make any changes, then it's not substantial enough to cause some, uh, the agency to come back and retract the award. So, um, but I think it's a good project. I think it fits what they're asking us to do. Um, we just have to see how it flushes out whenever it goes against the competition.
All right, I understand the motion, uh, permit resolution authorizes submission of the application. First by Commissioner Gore, second by Commissioner Hammond. Any questions, comment?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
You know, we need to get serious about getting a facilities plan together. And these are all great projects. I mean, I think it's wonderful, but we're constantly coming up with stuff that we just get hit with all of a sudden. Two million here, three million there, you know, it's, uh, we need a facilities plan that we can stick with. And I understand, I understand grant, you know, grabbing for these big grants is good stuff, but still it's taking money that we may need to be using somewhere else.
Yeah, and it, that's coming. I mean, that's our next step in buckets, I hope. It's, it has still these plan.
I'd like to see a master plan for the county as well. And again, going back to the brand guidelines, standardizing the look of the, the buildings too. So when you look at something, you know that, I mean, that's just, I mean, my little economic building line, you know, that's a county building because right now they all look totally different.
Yeah, good idea.
You got to start somewhere. The area needs, I mean, you know, we, we look at the existing facility right now. It's, it's obvious we need it. But, you know, I just think we, we need to look at the county as a whole and our facilities and prioritize some stuff.
We're out in public hearing, so you'll have to ask them in the hallway. All right, those in favor? Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you.
With that, uh, we'll go to executive session and take, uh, consent five and six. And executive session twenty point one, discuss consider personnel issues, twenty point two, discuss instead of sale, purchase of real property. It's now ten fifty-seven AM.
They will be studied as part of this, though.
Yeah, that's all I, that's.
All right, James County Court come to order after executive session. It's now one, uh, twelve twenty-eight PM. Uh, number five, approve job descriptions. All intention of motion. So moved. Much like Commissioner Hammond, second back to Mr. Colm for the job descriptions and discussion with the favor. Opposed, most carries, number six, nineteen point six, for payroll changes. Intention of motion.
Uh, I'd like to amend the motion. I'd like to pull the ball and pay increases for Mary Best, Kevin Crump, Angela Kerr, and Ashley Fletcher.
And approve the rest of.
And approve the remaining.
Just like Mr. Hammond, second back to Mr. Collins. Discussion for the favor.
All right.
Opposed, most carries. I don't think there was anything else to come out of this second session that needs to be voted on. So with that, we are adjourned at twelve twenty-nine PM. Thank you all. Have a good day.
You too, go.